Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the 1,197th regular meeting and public hearing of the Livonia City Planning Commission. I wish to inform all interested persons in our audience that for petitions on tonight's agenda, which involve a question of zoning, the Planning Commission will make a recommendation to City Council, and the City Council, after holding their own public hearing, will make the final determination as to whether a petition is approved or denied. The Planning Commission holds the only public hearing on request for preliminary plats and/or vacating petitions. The Commission's recommendation is forwarded to City Council for the final determination as to whether the petition is accepted or rejected. If a petition requesting a waiver of use or a site plan is denied tonight, the petitioner will have 10 days in which to appeal the decision in writing to City Council. Resolutions adopted by the City Planning Commission become effective seven days after the date of adoption. Planning Commission and professional staff have reviewed each of these petitions upon their filing. The staff has furnished the Commission with both approving and denying resolutions, which the Commission may or may not use depending on the outcome of the proceedings tonight. If our secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mrs. Denau.
Here.
Mr. Bonjero.
Here.
Mr. Long.
Here.
Mr. Ventura is not here. Karen Magno is here. Chairman Wolschow.
Is here. Also with us tonight, we have Mark Toramina from our Planning Department. For our folks in the audience who haven't been to one of these meetings before, the format of the meeting is we will call each of the items that are on our agenda, and our planning staff will then give background information about that petition. We'll then ask the petitioner to come forward to one of our podiums and address us to tell us more about their request. We may have some questions for them, and then there'll be an opportunity for anyone in the audience who wishes to speak for or against the petition to also come forward and speak before we make our decision. I'll prompt you along as we go through the meeting so you know what's going on, and we'll get started with item number one on the public hearing section of our agenda.
Petition 2023-03-01-01 submitted by ZA Design Build pursuant to sections 1.3.13 and 1.3.15 of the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance as amended, requesting to rezone the properties at 29023, 29009, and 29005 Eight Mile Road located on the south side of Eight Mile Road between Brentwood and Middle Belt Road in the northwest quarter of Section 1 from C1 Local Business to C2 General Business.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Toramina?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, this is a request to rezone three contiguous parcels that are located on Eight Mile Road just west of Middle Belt. The zoning change would be from C1 Local Business to C2 General Business. The site is between the Mid-8 Shopping Plaza and Clarenceville Cemetery. All three of the parcels are currently undeveloped. The combined land area is 2.07 acres with 334 feet of frontage along Eight Mile Road and a depth of 268 feet. The proposed zoning change is needed to facilitate the future development of a commercial building that would include an indoor climate-controlled storage facility and up to five retail tenants. Under section 6.54 of the ordinance, indoor climate-controlled storage is allowed in a C2 district, subject to waiver use approval, but the use is not permitted in the current C1 zoning district. General retail is permitted. Before the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance, two of the three parcels were zoned to OS Office Services, and then with the adoption of the new zoning regulations, the OS district was eliminated and replaced with the C1 district. This expanded the number of permitted and waiver uses associated with this category of use, which is neighborhood-oriented commercial. Indoor storage facilities, mainly because of their size, are limited to C2 zoning. In 2006, the city approved the development of a two-story, 12,000-square-foot medical office building. The approval was extended twice, however, the project was never developed. And then in 2017, Southwest Housing Solutions sought a zoning change to develop independent senior housing. The Planning Commission recommended approval, but the petitioner canceled the request prior to a final decision by the City Council. Medially adjacent to this property, as I indicated, is the, excuse me, the Mid-8 Plaza, which is a multi-tenant retail center. There's a gas station directly at the corner of Middle Belt and Eight Mile Road. Line to the east is the cemetery, as well as an office complex, and then to the south are residential properties that are zoned, RUF Rural Urban Farm. Preliminary site plan submitted with the application shows a two-story building. Parking would be provided in the front and the rear yards of the building. The overall building dimensions shown are 110 feet by 284 feet. Each floor would equal about 31,240 square feet, making the entire building 62,480 square feet. There would be five retail spaces, each measuring 20 feet by 60 feet, and those are shown in the center of the first level of the building facing Eight Mile Road. Each retail space would total 1,200 square feet. The combined area of the retail portion measures 7,169 square feet, which includes a corridor that runs along the south and east sides of those units. The remaining 55,311 square feet of the building space, which includes 24,000 square feet on the first level and a little over 31,000 square feet on the second floor, would be devoted to the self-storage use. The layout and the number of storage units is unknown. There is a notation on the plan that indicates that the building would be constructed of blocks and steel framing. In terms of parking, the preliminary plan shows 79 off-street parking spaces, where the ordinance requires 82 spaces. Along the rear of the property, the plan indicates an area for large vehicle storage. The grade of this property drops from front to back roughly 10 feet, and just south of the property is there is an open drainage channel. The use of the property, as shown on the plan, would likely require the construction of a retaining wall along the rear of the property, although these details are not provided at this time. There would be one centrally located driveway located off of Eight Mile Road, and the master plan categorizes this property as corridor commercial. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll be happy to read out the correspondence that we have on this item.
Yes, please.
First letter is from our Engineering Division, and it's dated March 16th, and it reads, "In accordance with your request, the Engineering Division has reviewed the above referenced petition. The existing parcels are currently served by Public Sanitary Sewer, Water Main, and Storm Sewer. The Water Main is located on the north side of Eight Mile Road and is owned by the City of Farmington Hills. The owners will need to work with the City of Farmington Hills during the planning process to provide water service to the site. Also, depending on the layout of the proposed storm sewer outlet from the site, the owner may need to submit drawings to Wayne County for approval of the storm sewer system. The proposed drawings do not indicate any storm water detention, which will be required in order to meet the Wayne County Storm Water Ordinance. We are unable to comment on impacts to the existing systems until design calculations are provided during the design and permitting submittals. It should be noted that any disturbances within the Eight Mile Road right-of-way will require the owner to obtain permits with either the Wayne County Department of Public Service or the Road Commission for Oakland County. Should the project move forward, we would request that the owner combine the three individual parcels into one parcel and provide an updated legal description for the overall parcel. When appropriate, the owner will need to start the combination process with the City Assessing Department." And that's the letter signed by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer. Next, we have a letter from our Livonia Fire and Rescue dated March 15th indicating that they have no objections to the proposal with the following stipulation: That sprinkler-suppression system with fire alarm may be required to be installed, and a fire hydrant within 100 to 150 feet of the fire department connection. A further detailed plan review will take place when the Division receives an official plan set." And that letter is signed by Brian Kukla, Fire Marshal. Next, we have a letter of no objection coming from the Department of Finance dated March 17th and signed by Connie Campula. A letter of no objection coming from the Office of the Treasurer dated March 8th and signed by Linda Shield, Treasurer of the City. A letter from our Assessment Department dated March 6th and signed by Kathy Siderlett indicating that the parcels should be combined prior to any building. And then lastly, we have an email correspondence from a resident, gives his name as Jacob Hatchey. This is dated Monday, April 3rd, and it reads as follows: Dear Planning Commission members, I am writing you today regarding Petition 2023-311, which is scheduled to be heard at the meeting on April 4th, 2023. The petition is to rezone 29023, 29009, and 29005 Eight Mile Road, Livonia, with the goal of constructing a self-storage facility on the property. The property is on the south side of Eight Mile between Middle Belt and Brentwood. The property backs up to several homes on Morlock Street, where I have lived for 11 years. I am opposed to the rezoning for the following reasons. Number one, there are currently seven storage facilities within a two-mile radius of the subject property. The market is saturated, and there is no need for additional storage facilities. Number two, this business will bring noise and traffic to an already congested area that backs up to a residential neighborhood. Morlock Street already has a problem with speeders and drivers using the street. To bypass the Eight Mile and Middle Belt intersection, residents have filed numerous complaints with LPD over the years. The proposed development will make the problem worse. Number three, it is no secret that the northeast Livonia has a higher crime rate than most of the city, as well as a greater number of vacant commercial properties. This area needs new development, however, we need development that creates a sense of community by increasing foot traffic and spurring additional development and economic activity. Another self-storage facility will not achieve these goals. The proposed development is for an unattractive quasi-industrial building that will generate few jobs and do nothing to stimulate positive economic growth. And number four, self-storage facilities are brightly lit properties that create light pollution for nearby residents. And five, the largely unregulated nature of self-storage facilities presents environmental hazards from renters who store hazardous material in the units that may leak and contaminate soil and groundwater. For these reasons, I urge you to deny Petition 2023-311. Thanks, Jacob Hatchey. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Toramina. Is there any questions for our planning staff?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Bonjero.
Mark, at the study meeting, the petitioner came in, told us, you know, their intentions with the property, and then it came up after the meeting about the posting of the sign saying mercantile, moderate, hazardous storage. Did they clarify what that is?
No.
Or should we leave it to the petitioner?
I think that's a question you should ask the petitioner. Clearly, that's something that would not be permitted by the zoning ordinance. In fact, one of the requirements specifically states that there not be any hazardous material storage in any type of indoors self-storage or climate-controlled facility.
Okay. I'll wait till the petitioner comes up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonjero. Any other questions for our planning staff? I don't see any other questions for our planning staff. I'm going to go to the petitioner next and see if they would like to make a presentation to us. Before I get started, though, I would like to remind both our petitioner and the folks in our audience that this is a rezoning request. So the focus of our decision-making tonight is going to be the zoning of this property. There will be some discussion about the type of building that's going to be put on the site. There may be some discussion about how it's going to appear, but you're not going to hear a ton of discussion tonight about the details of the building. That would be done in a site plan process, which happens after the rezoning. So we're going to try to focus as best we can on the zoning tonight, which is from C1 to C2. So with that, if our petitioner is in the audience here, welcome to please come to one of our podiums and make your presentation. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Zaid Arabo from ZA Design Build, representing one of the owners here in regards to the rezoning from C1 to C2 district. Mr. Toramina pretty much said most of what I wanted to say, which is, we're basically trying to rezone this property into a, excuse me, retail and indoor climate-controlled storage. As you stated, we don't have elevations of floor plans for right now, but more than likely, the elevations are going to be of a modern type of building with two stories, mostly of glass penetrations, and as we come around the corner, a little bit of glass as well. The rest of the building will be of sort of split-face masonry, so the building will look somewhat modern. As to the concern of the gentleman who sent the letter over, as far as the security and crime, this facility will be gated. Only the people that have access to the storage units will be able to access the back of this property. The front is retail, just like our next-door neighbors. It's going to be basically five retail units, and there'll be access at all times, just like a shopping center next door. We don't feel like we're making a major impact. We're not trying to put this in the middle of our residential district. We're right next door to a C2 as-is, and we're C1, and we're nestled in between a cemetery, which doesn't impact anyone, obviously. As far as lighting, pollution, I mean, the lights are going to be concentrated on the property per code, so the lights, the building will be well-lit, but that light isn't going to filter into the neighbors. And speaking of the neighbors, I want to let them know that their properties, if I'm not mistaken, they're about 300 feet, the neighbors that are directly behind us, obviously, cemetery, C2, and the C1 kitty-corner to our property. They're about 300 feet behind us with a pretty good drop-off, almost 10 to 20 feet depression, with a lot of trees and, obviously, certain times of the year. They won't even see this property. The impact will be on the main road, right? So the owners have done, we've done a lot of homework. Retail, for whatever C1 can handle, we feel like this works the best. It's not strictly just storage, but it's storage and retail as well. And we pretty much meet the parking requirements. You know, we shy from three parking spaces. The grade will play a little bit, you know, into the design of this eventually, civil engineering. It might be that the retaining walls in the back to hold up the earth may push this building up a little, so it may get a little bit smaller, depending on parking requirements. And that's all I have to say about the building. Can I answer your concern?
Yes, please.
Yeah, so there's not going to be any hazardous materials stored here, obviously. In life, you can't control what someone puts, you can't control what they put in their house or their commercial property, but this will be within the code, no hazardous material, just like any other storage place. It'll be sprinkled more than likely. I mean, obviously, I can break this building up so it's not sprinkled, but it makes more sense that it's sprinkled with fire alarm, and we're going to work with Farmington, and we'll make sure that we have water retention on the site with reducers, so that way we're not overwhelming the storm.
But understand, it says on your sign you posted mercantile, moderate, hazardous storage. It just didn't look really, it didn't look good, you know what I'm saying? Because I didn't hear that at the study meeting.
Sure. So I was sent something from the city that I had to specifically say it a certain way, but I don't remember. Then that's a mistake on our part, then. You're saying moderate, low hazard.
Mercantile.
Which is the retail.
Moderate, hazardous storage. On the sign posted on Eight Mile.
On this, okay. But so in the code, you have different sections for business or mercantile. When it comes to the lowest form of storage, the word hazardous is in there. So, I mean, what material are you concerned with? They're not storing anything.
Hazardous, I mean, I don't, that's a broad term, you know what I'm saying? I don't, I don't know what would be stored in there, but I see that, and I would be concerned.
But in the code book, it states that for this sort of storage facility, the calling for it is moderate hazardous. That's the name of it. It's very low hazardous material. It's not a high hazard material, so nothing that could be explosive, but any material can be hazardous. Anything can catch on fire at any time. That's why we have fire alarms and sprinklers and cameras and security cameras and that sort of thing.
I guess I would defer to Mark on that. Is there...
Well, he's referencing the building code, either the Michigan or National Building Codes. And again, this is a review of the zoning of the property, so referencing that code was certainly not a requirement of the, by the Planning Department or of the zoning ordinance. So again, I agree with your statement that, you know, it looks bad, and it would indicate that, you know, there's some degree of hazardous storage that would occur on the site, which is clearly not something that we're interested in seeing.
Yeah.
Nor would the owner of the building would want to put in his own building. He wouldn't want damage to his building, obviously. This is typical storage, people that have extra stuff that they can't put in their house, bikes and whatever.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonjero, and thank you, Mr. Arabo. Is there any questions for our petitioner from any of our commissioners?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Karen Magno.
Sir, do you own the property now, or is it something that's...
No, I'm not the owner. This gentleman is one of the owners. I'm just here representing.
But he owns the property. This is not something for lease or going to buy pending this...
No, sir, he's...
Rezoning.
Yeah, he's the full owner of the property. The gentleman that was here for the study meeting two weeks ago, and this gentleman as well.
And owned the property for how long, approximately?
I think since 2017 or 18.
About five years.
Yeah.
Okay.
It was after the approval of the last, the senior housing. I think they lost it to the bank and these gentlemen.
Okay. What type of, what type of research has been done to determine that storage is needed in and around this area?
I wasn't, okay, sorry. I wasn't involved in the research. The owners did their research, and they determined that, so they went through different options. Obviously, we went through trying to do residential and multifamily, and that's not even a zone for this anyways. Retail would be the easiest, right? But we came up with almost a 30,000-square-foot retail to make sense out of the size of this property. And in today's climate, retail is the most expensive to build. The retail building next to us is not fully occupied, and they feared that they may be at 40%, 50% occupancy, and that wouldn't hold water for the investment they're going to make. The bulk of this project, cost-wise, is going to be the underground work and the outside, not so much the building when it comes to this type of building. So I'm not privy to the exact research that they did, but as far as they were concerned, they thought this would make the most sense. And they didn't want to just do storage. They wanted to add the retail, you know, version to that as well.
And that goes back to what I was, my primary question. So we're wanting to change this property from C1 to C2 based on storage needs and the ability to put storage building on this property, but we're not hearing anything about that, the need in the community to change the zoning to accept that. What's the merit behind wanting to put it here? What is, what's backing up the requirement to change this?
Well, I'm sure they, they're, they wouldn't spend the money in the architectural plans and having me up here if they didn't think that this building was going to succeed. It's just like you're asking me, what would be the merit if you designed a 30,000-square-foot shopping center? Without having people to commit to lease, you don't build it. So again, I'm not privy to their research, but they feel like this retail with this size, small, or the possibility of maybe even expanding a little bit on this retail towards the front and keeping the storage mostly towards the back and the second floor, they feel like they'll be fairly successful. Nothing is a certainty in life, obviously, but they feel like this is their best shot at this property that's been vacant forever since the beginning of time, maybe, and then will remain vacant unless these gentlemen will do something about it.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Karen Magno. Any other questions for our petitioner? I don't see any other questions from any of our commissioners at this time. So what I'm going to do is go to the audience to see if there's folks in the audience wishing to speak for or against this. I believe there are, based on the number of people in the audience. I'm going to ask that folks who want to speak for or against this, please come forward to either one of our podiums. Most people are on this side, so you can use this podium. And we just ask that you try to keep your comments to a couple minutes so that everyone else has a chance to speak this evening. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Mike Rudell. I'm a resident of Morlock Street, the street directly behind the property, and I'm here tonight to discuss my concerns with you about the proposal. So I've lived in the neighborhood for 11 years, and I'm opposed to a self-storage facility on that property for the following reasons. Firstly, there are actually eight self-storage units within a two-mile radius. Four of them are in the city of Livonia, and Livonia has 16 total self-storage businesses. The market is saturated. So the last time a new storage facility was proposed in Livonia was nearly two years ago, so clearly, there's not a need for a new one. I spoke to all four of the owners of the storage units in Livonia that are less than two miles from this location, and they all have vacancies right now. The newest one, Livonia Budget Storage on Seven Mile, and the old Toys R Us, has 500 vacancies. So the market is saturated, as I said. I don't think we need any more. This business, storage unit business, will bring a lot of noise and traffic to an already congested area that backs up to our residential neighborhood. Self-storage units are a 24/7 business, which means we will have people coming in and out of there at all hours of the night. Morlock Street already has a problem with speeders and drivers and loud noise that use our street to bypass Eight Mile and Middle Belt intersection. We've filed numerous complaints with LPD over the years. This proposed development will make the problem worse. Light pollution, we know that businesses now have these extremely bright lights. That area right now has no lights. That's going to make light up everyone's backyards and shining through their windows at night when they're trying to sleep. The other thing I wanted to bring up is that northeast Livonia right now has a great number of vacant commercial properties. If we add another self-storage unit, and the market's already saturated, what happens when these businesses start to fail? We're going to have more blight in our neighborhood. I agree that the area needs new development, but we need development that creates a sense of community and increases foot traffic and spurs additional economic activity. Another self-storage facility does not achieve these goals. The proposed development is unattractive and would not fit into the aesthetic of the neighborhood. I also wanted to share that there have been several news stories in the national media lately of self-storage units being used for methamphetamine labs and exploding, creating a danger to the community. These create environmental hazards and toxic chemicals that could hurt people in the neighborhood. There is a stream at the rear of the property that goes into the Upper Rouge River. We don't know what people are going to put in these storage units. They could put gas, oil, anything they want, and if something was to happen, then that can leak into the stream. The last point I want to make is, I want to ask this Commission tonight to think about how this proposal aligns with Livonia being a family-first city. This proposed development will bring increased traffic, noise, environmental hazards, while doing very little to improve the economy of the area. This is not the right type of development for Livonia. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak? Please come forward. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I don't have anything prepared, but I listened to all the information that was given, and we live in the house directly behind this property.
Can I get your name and address so we know who...
I'm Jonathan Bauer. We live at 29030 Morlock Street.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Bauer.
Yeah, so the sign obviously got everybody concerned when it said that there was going to be hazardous materials, and, you know, we're all here because of that mostly. But he's not very clear about what this place is going to be, because he says it's going to be retail, but he also says it's going to be storage units, and they don't seem to have a clear plan about the drainage. And right behind this property, it goes downhill into a creek, like the last gentleman said. And he said that there's nothing back there but trees. That's not true. My dad has had tire swings, picnic tables, all that stuff, right up against the edge of our property. Our backyard touches this field. So if they build something there, they're looking right at our grandkids and everyone in our family. And, yeah, doesn't sound good. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Please come forward. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. My name's Stephanie Wilson, and I've lived in the neighborhood for 23 years. We've raised both of our daughters there. My oldest daughter's an architect, and it's just not a good fit for our neighborhood. You know, having a self-storage neighborhood backing into our neighborhood is going to devalue our homes. And with the stream being right there, it is an environmental risk if anything's leaking. You know, a retail establishment isn't going to be as much of a risk. There's already retail right next door. It makes sense to have another retail establishment there. It doesn't make sense to have a self-storage. There's a self-storage place just down the street at Grand River and Eight Mile. There's one on Seven and Middle Belt. There's, you know, if you go down Eight Mile, there's a ton of self-storage. We don't need another self-storage facility. You know, our neighborhood has gone through a lot of hard times. When the economic downturn happened, a lot of the people who had a higher income lost their jobs and moved out. You know, we're trying to work our way back up, and putting a self-storage facility in there is not going to be the message that we want to send. It's not going to stabilize the neighborhood, and it's not going to do anything for our property values. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Hi, good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name's Andrew Kabakie. I live on Long Street. I moved in with my girlfriend a couple years ago, and she was telling me when they built that storage unit right behind her house on Grand River, that a bunch of rats came out. So it was gross for her, like all the neighbors. They had rats in their garage and their houses, garbage cans, dead rats, dogs eating them. It wasn't, it wasn't nice. So I would assume the same thing would happen in that area. I'd also like to say, how does... I'd also like to say, how does this enrich the city? What does this do for future generations to wanna stay put in Livonia? What will this draw outsiders? This won't draw any outsiders into Livonia to spend money in Livonia, which is already hard enough to do with all these vacant, with the vacancies and, you know, everything on Seven Mile, pretty much. So we got other needs in Livonia than a, what, 17th storage unit? So, yeah, especially one that's a quarter mile, half a mile away from one, and then right there on Seven Mile and Middle Belt, we got a two-story one? Better needs for the city. Sorry.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against this item? Good evening, sir.
I'm Andrew Bauer. I live right in the middle behind this proposed property thing. And like I said, I've lived there for 71 years. And I have, like my son said, I have two swing sets. I have picnic tables and the creek flows through there constantly from Eight Mile. Not only the gas station, the strip mall, the transmission shop, all that water flows out of a pipe and flows through our backyard. And this man's talking about green trees. If they put a wall between there, all those trees will have to disappear because there's only six feet of trees between me and this open field. I have constantly deer, raccoons, possums, there's all kinds of wildlife down there. Besides, my seven great-grandchildren and my 10 grandchildren, they come over and play in there all the time. So I'm concerned more so with the hazardous than anything else, but the destruction of the open area for the wildlife. And if you're gonna put something in there, I think you should put something like a dog park or maybe a bus yard. Move the bus yard from Oakland County into Wayne County from the Clarenceville School District, which is in Wayne County. Why are buses are across the street? We've got three schools within a half a mile of this facility, and they wanna put something that says hazardous on it? Doesn't sound good to me. We say no. Almost everybody here is, all the houses on this little map that you sent us. I went into City Hall and asked for an explanation of the C1 to C2, and none of this paperwork says anything about sections 13 through 1315. They're all 5, 6, 7. So this is irrelevant information. But it just really deeply concerns me that they could put anything like that right adjacent to all of our backyards. Six out of seven of us have dogs in our backyards. And you've got people wandering in and out of there all night long. It's just more noise and aggravation for us than our pets. And I'm opposed of it, too.
Thank you, Mr. Bauer. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? There's another gentleman coming forward. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Nick. I live at 29060 Morlock. I'm directly behind this property that they're proposing. A lot of what I was gonna say has already been talked about in an extensive manner, so I'll try to keep it short for you guys. But I would really like to see something that proposes more economic benefits for the city. That's a huge part of this is that these storage units are gonna go unused. This retail center, if not developed properly, will not be utilized, and it won't bring any money into the city. We have a lot of people that love using our properties to the fullest. Like Andy said, we're only a few feet away at best from the edge of the property, so it's going to create huge detriment and potential blight into the city having this there, especially if it isn't utilized properly. We deal with an extensive amount of pollution from the strip mall, from the gas station, and everything else in between. Me and my girlfriend alone pick up almost 30 gallons of trash every other week that is constantly in this property, constantly blowing through that property into our properties. I think everybody that lives back there has spent their fair share of time picking up trash that isn't ours just to try to keep the city clean, and this is only gonna aggravate and further make that problem worse. Trying to get them to be held accountable for it is not easy, and it's not a process that generally goes well in our favor, so it ends up falling on our shoulders. Just seeing anything in addition to that really won't be beneficial, and it'll definitely bring down prices. I mean, having that two-story facility is going to be a major detriment. And the other major part was, yeah, we have a lot of wildlife to say deer, turkeys, everything else. They're all gonna be displaced in towards our properties, and all of this runoff is then gonna be coming up to our property. He likes to say there's 10 to 20 feet of drop-off coming to our property. That's just not true. As much as it goes down, it comes right back up, and we are basically level with that property and level to where they are going to be. So it's all going to be affecting us disproportionately, including the light pollution that this would bring. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against this item? Alright. Young man does, okay, thank you. Alright, is there, I don't think there's anybody else wishing to speak for or against this item. Thank you for your comment, young man. I will now go back to the petitioner and give you an opportunity to make any final comments before we make our decision. Is there anything that you heard that you wish to address?
Yeah, there's a couple of points I want to address for the neighbors.
Thank you, Mr. Arbo.
I heard a lot about the saturation and the 16 or 17 storage units. That's gonna be a risk the owner's gonna take, and he's willing to take that risk if approved. There are 30 shopping centers. There are many of, every business in the community of Livonia and every community in the United States, everyone, if approved, has the right to put up a business and take a risk. It's a very big, expensive risk. If he, if the owners had other ideas of something that is less impactful and falls within the C1 district, clearly, they would've came up with that, avoiding all this unnecessary, you know, meetings and getting everybody riled up. So as far as the saturation goes, it's their risk. And it won't be blightful because no one is gonna spend millions of dollars and leave a building empty and walk away from it. That just doesn't make any sense. They'll do, they've done their homework, and I'm sorry, I can't give you the proof of their homework, but they wouldn't spend this much money to come this far just to put up whatever that they think may or may not make money. As far as the speeders on Morlock, I'm not sure how this project affects people who speed on the street behind us. Our, you know, people that are gonna utilize this building are coming from the main road. We have nothing to do with Morlock. That's an issue that the police, I'm sure, can handle. Which, by the way, this will create tax revenue, enrich the city. Well, it will. I mean, they're gonna have to pay taxes way more than what you're paying back there in these homes. So it'll create more tax revenue to be...
Everyone, hold on, hold on, please.
To be able...
Hold on. Give him an opportunity to speak. Sir, please stay, keep your attention on us.
To be able to, clearly, this will generate a lot of tax revenue. Every new building generates a lot of tax revenue, which helps the fire department, the police department, and everyone else to help better the city. So again, the speeders, I have no idea what that has to do with our property. The vacancies in the other stores and other storage units. Somebody talked to the other storage units. There's always vacancies in life. There are good times and bad times for centers and homes and every other kind of business. Again, the assumption, not the assumption, the fact is that these people did their homework and they're comfortable with this sort of business. Leakage, environmental into the stream, that's not gonna happen. You know, if we build a shopping center and we put up a laundromat, that has more of a chance for leaking something that is not of good material into the stream than anything else. This is a storage unit. Again, we don't know what people are gonna put, but it's gonna be within, within the building code, and the people that are gonna be in the storage unit and running the storage unit will make sure people follow. If you build a retail center, you don't know what people are gonna put in the back room. It could be something hazardous. And the stormwater is gonna stay on the property by, because this is more than an acre. The county's gonna make us do underground water retention, which will be held on the site, will go nowhere near the stream, won't disturb anyone, and will be probably reduced into the main storm and eventually into River Rouge. That's the drainage. As far as the neighbors worrying about people looking into their houses, the back of the center is all masonry. There are no windows. And we're gonna have an eight-foot masonry wall, like a simulated masonry wall, or of the same material as the building. That's gonna separate the two units, so the people can still play in their backyard, and no one is gonna disturb them. As far as a lot of traffic and noise, that could be created by any business you put here. This body has approved the senior citizens. Those kind of businesses get ambulances at all times of the day, unfortunately, for reasons we know why. Same for senior housing. People can visit at any time. Same for retail. You have the right to go to your shopping center anytime you want, just as you would have the right to go to this place, to this facility, at any time. And I don't, I really don't think this is, I have no proof of this. I don't think this is gonna devalue any of these good folks' homes. I think it's gonna bring up the value of their homes. And as far as the rats, I mean, with a controlled business, and more than likely, the city's gonna make the owner sign a maintenance agreement, they're gonna have to keep up with this property. It's gonna be a lot cleaner than what it is right now with cameras and gates. And there's gonna be someone there at all times to manage this storage center, just as any other business. And that's all I have to say.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Arbo. With that, I'm gonna close the public hearing, and I'm gonna go to my fellow commissioners for a motion. The motion is in order.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Bongero.
I would like to offer a denying resolution. The request to rezone the properties at 29023, 29009, and 29005, Eight Mile Road from C1 to C2 is hereby denied for the following reasons. Number one, the proposed zoning change in the property's intended use, including the storage of moderate hazardous material, would be incompatible and inharmonious with the surrounding area. Number two, the intended scale of development, including the outdoor storage of large vehicles, would adversely affect the adjacent single-family residential. Number three, the existing C1 zoning is appropriate for this site. Number four, the proposed zoning change is unnecessary for developing the property. Number five, the property does not meet the minimum lot size requirement specified in section 6.542 of the zoning ordinance. And number six, development of a large storage facility that may include moderate hazardous material along with the outdoor parking of large vehicles would require substantial modification of the site and its sloping grades and would adversely affect the surrounding environment, including the open drain directly behind the property.
Is there support?
Support.
Alright, we have a motion to deny made by Mr. Bongero and supported by Mrs. Dinaro. Is there any discussion on the motion? If there's no discussion, if I can ask our secretary to please call a roll. This is on a motion to deny.
Mr. Bongero. Aye. Mrs. Dinaro.
Aye.
Mr. Long.
Aye.
Karen Magno votes aye. Chairman Walsh.
Votes aye. Motion passes. This will be a recommendation being made to City Council. This will go on to City Council with a recommendation of denial. The petitioner will have an opportunity to have a public hearing, and ultimately, the City Council will make the final decision on this zoning. So thank you for everyone to come out to this meeting tonight. And if you are interested in following this through to City Council, please watch their agendas to see this item at their agenda. So thank you, everyone. Thank you, sir. If everyone can exit kinda quietly, if you're gonna exit, 'cause we still do have a couple items left on our agenda. We have item number two on the miscellaneous section of our agenda. Thank you.
Petition 2023-03-SN-01, submitted by Metro Detroit Signs on behalf of Pentagon Center Condominium, requesting approval pursuant to Council Resolution Number 681-98 and Section 11.08 of the Livonia Vision 21 Zoning Ordinance as amended to replace existing ground signs with larger non-conforming panel signs at 19500 Hagerty Road, located on the east side of Hagerty Road between Seven Mile Road and Phillips Road in the southwest quarter of Section 9.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Tormina.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a sign petition. It is a request to replace two monument signs with pylon signs at the Pentagon Center Entertainment Campus, which is located on Hagerty Road and Seven Mile. Pentagon Center is a commercial condominium development that has three full-service restaurants, Bahama Breeze, J. Alexander's, and BJ's Roadhouse, as well as a PNC Bank, a Hyatt Place Hotel, and then, of course, the AMC Livonia 20 Theaters. The PNC Bank and all three restaurants front on Hagerty Road, whereas the theaters and the hotel are located further back on the property and are less visible to traffic. It was in 1998 that Pentagon received approval of a sign package that included two monument signs identifying the AMC movie theaters. The AMC signs are both at the main entrances to the campus, so there's one along Hagerty Road and another on Seven Mile Road. The center is classified as a business center, technically, and under Section 11.03083, they're allowed two ground signs measuring a maximum of 40 square feet in area and eight feet in height. The existing signs conform with these standards. They're very similar in size and appearance, and they're currently used solely to identify the AMC theaters. And here is what the one sign looks like along Seven Mile Road. The two replacement signs would also be identical. However, each of these signs would measure 49 square feet and would be 12 feet in height. They would be internally illuminated with seven panels identifying six businesses that comprise the Pentagon Center campus. The bottom panel, as you can see from this illustration, would be left blank. There's a minimum required setback of 10 feet from the right-of-way. Both signs would comply with that requirement. Because the area and height of the signs exceed what Section 11083 allows, a final approval would be subject to variance being granted by the Zoning Board of Appeals. The submitted plans include replacing multiple directional signs. However, these are not regulated under the sign ordinance. So this is what the sign looks like. You can see the seven panels. It kinda gives you a reference height-wise. In this case, it's 204 inches, or roughly 12 feet in height. This one is very similar, there's a rendering showing it. So both signs, the one on Hagerty and Seven Mile, would each look very similar. Here's the other sign on Hagerty Road. You can see it's similar in size and design to the one on Seven Mile Road. And again, the design is identical. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll read out the correspondence.
Yes, please.
First, we have a letter coming from our Inspection Department dated March 22nd indicating that a variance from the ZBA would be required to maintain the excess number and size of signs proposed. I believe that is the excess size of the signs in this case. They have no further objections to the petition in that letter, signed by Jerome Hannah, Director of Inspection. We have an email correspondence coming from our Treasurer's Office, excuse me, from our Finance Department correcting or updating. The original letter dated March 17th indicated there that there was a total due to the city in the amount of $497.40. They, that bill was paid, and it's indicated that the past due portion had been paid. It does leave a current balance of $4,030.05, but that is not due until April 10th of this year. That email correspondence and letter are both provided by Jennifer Wagner, who is an account clerk with our Accounting Department. And then lastly, we have a letter coming from our Office of the Treasurer indicating that no personal property taxes are due. Therefore, they do not have an objection to the proposal. Originally, there were taxes due, but those two were paid. And that letter is dated, it was updated March 30th and signed by Linda Sheel, Treasurer of the City. With that, I'll answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tormina. Any questions for our planning staff? I don't see any. Our petitioner is at our podium. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Paul Dieters. I am with Metro Signs and Lighting, 11444 Colts Avenue in Warren. And with me here this evening, Mr. Bob Mount. He is with Beaumont, he's a project director. And I think if the board would like, he's happy to speak to some of the challenges that that property faces with the limited ground signage that's there right now for the many people that enter that facility, particularly those along Hagerty. And also with me is Mr. Patrick Shrock, who is the Vice President of Jonah Realty. They are the developer of the property and the current property manager as well. And Mr. Shrock can speak to sort of the unique nature, the condominium aspect of this and the challenges of having all these different stakeholders involved in that facility. But... But for the board's purpose, I'd like to just reiterate here that, hope that you would consider somewhat the uniqueness of this property. And I think that what you'd find in most cases, most multi-tenant sites within the community consist of a single structure that's separated from the road by a large parking lot. And ours, however, consists of multiple buildings with either restricted or almost no visibility from the main roads. And I think to some extent, you might find that the most comparable facility or development to ours may be the College Park, which is just to the south of us. And I say that because there are a number of hotels there, obviously got the three Marriott properties off of Six Mile, and then you also have a number of restaurants, whether it's Fleming's or Pancheros, the Leos, none of which are visible from the road. However, College Park has a very distinct advantage in that there are a number of very large pillars or entry monument signs that brand the entrance to that as College Park. And so, Pentagon's with the, sort of the condominium structure that we have and multiple owners doesn't afford for us the benefit of leveraging what might be a unique branding or name recognition of the development. So, and in addition to that, we can throw in, there's also a major medical facility, Beaumont, that generates a lot of traffic both through and within that. So, therefore, we just really would like to stress upon you how important it is that ground signage and adequate ground signage is even more critical to convey a little bit of the mass that they may have at that site and for the convenience of the guests and what that would offer to them. And I think you'd find, and hope you would agree, that especially as competitive as the restaurant business is, that multiple restaurant offerings displayed together helps create a little bit of the impression of a dining hub or destination. And I think you'd agree that somewhat, to some extent, successful restaurants feed off of one another. And then certainly with the nature of the people who would be visiting the hotel and/or the movie theater, they're probably traveling in many cases a little farther away than what a lot of the restaurants or other sites in Livonia might have. And the ability to navigate through that and find how to enter into those spaces would be certainly a big resource and a useful benefit for the community. I think what you'll see here is, as Mr. Toramina had gone through, is the signs that we're proposing here are a significant upgrade from what's there right now. They're tastefully done, easy to read, and I think that they would be both a real asset, not only to that center and the functionality of that, but also for the community as well. And I know it's a little bit of a unique circumstance, and you have to look at it from site to site, but you know, there are a number of other places where there are multi-tenant signs, and we took some photos of these in different developments throughout the city, and we tried not to do this. And I took pictures of a number of them here, not that these are bad, but would say is that, you know, many of these are larger and taller than we're proposing and have significantly more tenants. There's all different kinds of colors and background styles and things like this. We tried to keep a very understated, classy, easy-to-read, with nice contrast signage that would also be complimentary to what Beaumont is doing, to create a little bit of a development look, because it's a similar style of sign, obviously that Beaumont and probably in succession, Corwell Health has become that, you know, has a little bit different color scheme than we do. But we think the two of them in conjunction with one another will be a very attractive and useful signage presentation for the entire campus. So, that's all really I have for this point, and I don't know if you have any questions for the two gentlemen that are with me, too, they'd be happy to address their concerns as well.
Well, thank you for your presentation, Mr. Dieters. Let me see if there's any questions for you or any of your fellow petitioners here. Is there any questions for Mr. Dieters or his cohorts? Mr. Long?
Thank you. So, I would, I think, I don't want to speak for my colleagues, but I think it's a massive improvement what you're proposing compared to what we have right now. I think that the sign on Seven Mile is completely logical, it makes perfect sense. When you're driving down Hagerty, a lot of the buildings that would appear on the sign are much more visible from Hagerty. So, I have my own thoughts on this, but why don't you share with us why we need the same sign on Hagerty that we need on Seven Mile?
Understood. And I appreciate your concerns, and I know that trying to keep within the spirit of the ordinance, one of the things that I might like to share with you is here, and it's not evident now, but if you look at this photo, and I'm happy to hand this out if you would like to, if the commissioners would like to see it, if I'm allowed to do that. Particularly in the summer months.
Thank you.
When there are very mature trees all the way along that development on Hagerty, you can't, almost to some extent, especially in front of the BJ's, you can hardly see the building when there's trees, when there's foliage on those trees. And for that reason, it's just a lot easier for people to be able to identify that. In addition to having this mass, and to be candid for somewhat selfish reasons, too, we'd like for the people to stay in Livonia, make it easier for them to get here than going across the street to the restaurants in Northville for that matter, too. So, but it is very difficult to find those businesses along there in the summer, and I think the gentleman here from Beaumont can attest to that, to how but a challenge it is. There's a, people are going pretty fast along there, and it's difficult to navigate that. So, for that reason, we're asking for variance on that.
And the location of the sign, the proposed sign on Hagerty, would that be, is that right at the entrance? Is that the location of it?
Yeah, so the two signs that we're proposing would be actually in the exact same footprint where the existing AMC ground-bounded signs are. We would just like to swap those out and modernize them so that they would also have, and I don't, I don't think, as Mr. Toramina had mentioned, you don't really have it in your packet, but we're replacing the, and it's not for the board here to determine because they're allowed, is the small, there you go, thank you so much for putting that up, the small directional signs will be very complimentary to this and make just more of a campus feel and a lot classier looking.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Any other questions for our petitioner?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Karen Magno.
How does Beaumont play into this signage? You're confusing me a little bit. How does the Beaumont Hospital play into the signage that's going to be new here?
So, well, you know, if I might, and I believe these gentlemen might be able to answer that to a greater degree, too, is they're sort of shared with this, and what we're trying to do is to make sure, you know, they're going to be using the same ingresses for the property that these existing businesses do. We would like to have a more of a uniform presentation for this. Beaumont is looking at a future date to be able to have an entrance sign along the far north end of this because they don't have any identification to be able to get in there, and it's really used at the opposite end of this. It's really more so to demonstrate the challenges that the limited ground signage has here. And there are some complications due to the, this condominium effect of the existing ownership structure of the property, that all of the ground signage and signage for the existing tenants would need to be approved by this board and council first before the ownership group, in fact, there's one in particular is holding out, and I hope I'm not speaking out of turn, since it's Patrick, that would say that would not be in support of moving forward with anything for any kind of easement agreement unless the existing businesses can have improved identification, because they're challenged right now. So, there's sort of a loose connection right now, sir. It's probably more relevant down the road.
Is slot number seven or one of the slots going to be intended for Beaumont Hospital down the road?
No, sir.
No. It would be a separate sign.
Yeah, that, excuse me. That slot, there's two possibilities with that slot. Bahama Breeze could be technically two units, but they decided to take one big unit because they wanted the parking, or if there's ever the possibility of expanding within the center. So, we're just leaving our options open. But that's, but we would do a separate sign for Beaumont, so when people are driving up Hagerty Road, they'll be able to see it on the north part of Pentagon Center.
Our hardship, that north, CBS Fox Drive is on the north side right there. So, since we have limited access from Seven Mile, so the primary access to our site is off Hagerty right there. You can see that's a very long drive, so we have, since we've opened last year, we get a lot of comments from our patients and visitors that they have a hard time finding that drive to find their way back to the building. I think it should be understandable as far as that is to get to the building back there. Right now, I've been working with Patrick over the past year since we've opened and communicating with him.
Sir, could you come closer to the mic? Because we have our vast TV audience, I would like to hear you as well.
Sorry. So, right now, we are transitioning, we have, over to Corwell Health, so we are working on rebranding right now. We are redesigning all of our signage. We will be going through the entire system, replacing Beaumont signs with Corwell Health signs, so we're in the process of developing that, designing that right now. I think when we come back and we replace the Beaumont signage with the Corwell Health signage, at that time, I think we would look to request the sign at the end of CBS Fox Drive to, so people off of Hagerty know to turn down that drive to get back to the Beaumont or Corwell Health building.
It just, it seems strange to me, it seems like we're here for a Beaumont sign, not a shopping, not an AMC, Bahama Breeze, Hyatt Place, BJ's, J. Alexander, PNC Bank. It seems like we're here for a Beaumont reason, not a shopping center, or not a paragon, or whatever this is called, property.
I guess just talking with Patrick is just sharing that, you know, accessing off Hagerty Road, having better signage and stuff to get to our properties, we're not ready to come forward yet, but I guess I'm just here in support of our neighbor who we've been working with and hope to work something out in the future with.
The other thing is, is just, we didn't want this to be a surprise to you, we thought it'd be fair to the commission, too, when we talk about a campus and shared ingresses and egresses, and really what we would like to see for the entire development, and thought it might enable you folks to make a better decision as well. I didn't want to come back in after we were to get approval for this, if we're fortunate enough to do so, to then come back on the heels and say, hey, you guys were just here a minute ago, why didn't you say anything about this? I didn't think that would be fair to anybody. So, we just wanted to let you know, that's really what we would like to do, and that's going to be in the pretty near future here. But once again, it's the same style. Beaumont is looking for the same style sign that they have on Seven Mile, you know, just a classy-looking, you know, well-done, tasteful sign.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Karen Magno. Any other questions for our petitioner? Mr. Toramina?
Yeah, I'd like to go back to a statement made previously about the need for the identification, particularly along Seven Mile Road. Did I understand you correctly that one of the unit owners of the complex sees the ability to get additional identification along Seven Mile as a possible resolution to an easement issue in that area? Could you go back and elaborate on that a little bit further? Because we're aware of the, a situation where the adjacent landowner to the west at that driveway coming in off of Seven Mile tried to secure an easement from the condominium association for access to the road there and was rejected by a vote of the unit owners, the co-owners of the condominium, I should say. Would this possibly resolve that issue? Did I hear you correctly, or is that?
No, that's a different co-owner who has an issue, so that particular issue you're speaking about is still being considered. We're trying to find an alternate way of working through that. But this is a different co-owner who, when I presented them with the possibility of Beaumont having a sign, they insisted that they wanted to have the maximum assigned, they felt like they were selling their sign rights from underneath them. So, before they would give permission for Beaumont, we said we would get new signs for the center. But that other issue is still to be handled.
Okay. I misunderstood that. Thank you for finding that.
Yeah, there's a lot of co-owner issues there, so.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Toramina. Any other questions for our petitioner? I think we've exhausted all our questions at the moment. Is there anyone in our audience wishing to speak for or against this item? I don't see anybody coming forward. I think we've given you a chance to make your presentation. Is there anything else you wanted to say before we made our decision, gentlemen?
No, it's just, it's, I was going to add this, because of the very nature of the AMC being in the back, and when they built it, the center back in 98, they put the restaurants in front, you know, it's not in-line, so the restaurants had to go in front. So, like he said, everything's spread out, and, you know, we're hoping that the sign that, I honestly think, when people, if we put, when we get those signs, if we get those signs, people are going to drive by them and say, I didn't know there was a Hyatt back there, because it's just, there's no way you can, you would know. So, and even Bahama Breeze, we've had to trim the trees and it sits lower, you know, it's not really flat with Hagerty Road. It sort of does this. You'll see a lot of, actually, you'll see a lot of the parking lots alligatored because it does slide, it does slide down, the water does slide down. So, I think it's because of the nature of the center of the AMC and their parking needs and everything having to go up front, it's not your typical in-line center where, you know, you could look over there and you'll see the stores. So, it works here, you know, the variance does work.
I think we got it. Thank you, Mr. Shrock. I appreciate your comments. If there's no further comments from any of our commissioners, I will ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Long.
I'd like to offer an approving resolution that the request to replace two monument signs at the Pentagon Center will, with new pylon signs at 19500 Hagerty Road is approved, subject to City Council approval and the following conditions. Number one, the revised drawings prepared and submitted by Metro Signs dated February 2023 are approved and shall be adhered to. Number two, this approval is subject to the petitioner being granted variances from the Zoning Board of Appeals for excess sign area. And number three, any additional signs shall return before the Planning Commission and City Council for review and approval.
There is your support.
Support.
I have a motion to approve by Mr. Long, supported by Ms. Dinaro. Is there any discussion on the motion? I will simply say, because I don't usually make too many comments, I'll simply say that I, like Mr. Long, like the attractive nature of the sign that's proposed. I think it is a classy-looking sign compared to some of the other ones I've seen in other developments. So, thank you for that. If our secretary is ready, please call a roll.
Mr. Long.
Aye.
Ms. Dinaro.
Aye.
Mr. Bongero.
Aye.
Karen Magno votes aye. Chairman Walsh.
Votes aye. Motion passes. We'll go on to City Council with an approving recommendation. Thank you for coming this evening. Thank you. And we have one item left on our agenda, Mr. Secretary.
That is the approval of the minutes of the 1,196th Public Hearing and Regular Meeting held by the Planning Commission on February 28, 2023.
Motion to approve.
And supported by, all right, we have a motion by Ms. Dinaro, supported by Mr. Long. If there's no objection, I think we can safely show five to approve that. And I hear no objections, so we'll mark that as approved. That takes us to the end of our agenda. Is there any other business to come before this Planning Commission? I see no other business, so would someone like to make an adjourning motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. That's by Dinaro and Long to adjourn. Again, if there's no objections, we will show five on that, and the meeting will be adjourned at 8:09 PM. We'd like to thank Livonia Television staff for bringing this meeting to the community, and we would wish, there's also, I do want to make a quick comment before we close the meeting, that this is a week of a lot of celebrations and holidays going on. Not only is it the middle of Ramadan, we also have Passover coming tomorrow, we have Easter this weekend, so everyone that's watching- Easter this weekend, so everyone that's watching, I certainly wish a happy holiday for your respective religions and again, a good night to Livonia.